I just wanna dive into the blue. Doesn't really matter what we do. Don't let the moment pass us by. Just trust that the universe is right. Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. This is the good life. This is the good life. Out in the sunshine, nothing but good times. This is the good life. This is the good life. I just wanna spend every day with you. Happy with the little things we do. Just keep a smile, hold your head up high. I promise it works every time. Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. This is the good life. This is the good life. Out in the sunshine, nothing but good times. This is the good life. This is the good life. Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. This is the good life. This is the good life. Out in the sunshine, nothing but good times. This is the good life. This is the good life. I get my groove and swagger on blasting out my favorite song. Let my freaky out, let it show.
Let it show.
Ain't nothing wrong with confident loving me, I'm feeling it. Let the rhythm move and let go. But some days I'm feeling so down and ain't feeling so pretty, yeah. But I go on loving myself, cause I don't need that pity, yeah. Cause I get high and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. High and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. But don't matter what they say, I'mma, I'mma do my thing. I'mma, I'mma do my thing. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Shake my nails and looking fine, throw my hair back feeling prime. Look up baby, I'm on a roll. I'm on a roll. Feel the beat is coming strong, make me wanna clap along. Feeling good wherever I go. But some days I'm feeling so down and ain't feeling so pretty, yeah. But I go on loving myself, cause I don't need that pity, yeah. Cause I get high and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. High and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. But don't matter what they say, I'mma, I'mma do my thing. I'mma, I'mma do my thing. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. High and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. High and low, yeah dust it off and shake it off. But don't matter what they say, I'mma, I'mma do my thing. I'mma, I'mma do my thing. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Do your thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Just watch me. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. I'mma do my thing, yeah. Something tells me there's a good time coming, just wait and see. You got to put a little faith in something, might as well be with me. You feel it when the bass starts grooving, go let it move your feet. Around here we ain't afraid of nothing, dancing like no one sees. I feel free, so free.
Okay, welcome to our study session today. We're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance. Uh, let's see. Mr. Ellis, will you help us out today?
Sure. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the city council request to complete a speaker card and deliver the card to the city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications and once called upon to speak, request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Uh, there has been one revision to the agenda. Item number one, uh, the presentation was revised. So on to our first item, which is communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment only on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note the state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications and when called upon to speak, we request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards, um, from the communications for the public?
Mayor, no, I do not.
You did not?
No, this is for an agenda item.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay, so we are on to item number one, which is the discussion of, uh, building and grading permit fees for infill lots in the city's historic district. Ms. Cletta, um, our planning and development director will present the report.
Thank you and good afternoon. So as you indicated, um, we're just gonna go over some infill fees in the historic district of the downtown specific plan. And really this pertains to, uh, dealing with the new construction of single-family homes. So really the ask today of the council is, does the council want to adopt a reduced plan check and inspection fee for the construction of new single-family homes that would really be constructed on infill residential lots within the boundary of our downtown specific plan? Just to give the council a visual of what the boundary is, this is an exhibit of our downtown specific plan. This is a plan that's already adopted in place and it already has existing development standards. Uh, one thing that this plan does have is it does have residential design guidelines when it comes to infill residential development. So that was something that was already taken into consideration. And the reason for that is that we wanted to make sure on these infill lots that there would be, uh, it would encourage new compatible residential development with the existing development. It would also make sure that infill development incorporates traditional architectural characteristics of existing residences. And those guidelines are also to ensure that building forms are compatible with existing residents. So we really wanted to make sure that whatever is going in on the infill lots, it's in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and that the building form is also compatible. So really today's overview for the council is to look at the permit and inspection costs when it comes to new single-family construction using a hypothetical example. So staff chose a 3,500 square foot home with four bathrooms and it would be on a lot that was less than one acre. And again, these fees will vary just depending on the size of the home. I just wanted to give the council a quick education on permit fees versus development impact fees. Most of you may know the difference already. However, um, I just wanted to bring this to your attention because the city does collect both when it comes to new construction. A planned review and permit fee is actually the cost that is payable to the city or any third party for doing the work that is incurred with the review of the permit application. So it's really that direct service fee that you are paying to the city. The development impact fee, however, is a permit fee that is applied to new constr- ... on our infrastructure and our facilities. And I will have a following slide here coming up that will describe what those fees are. These fees are used citywide, they're collected over time and banked, and then they are actually applied to, uh, capital improvement projects that the city may undertake in terms of new capital infrastructure. So this exhibit you have here before you, uh, breaks down the permit to plan check inspection fee cost. That first column there shows you what the city plan check fees are. And you'll notice that we have the building plan check fee, which covers also plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. So that's a holistic plan review right there. There's also an overhead fire sprinkler plan.
Apparently you're finished.
Your three minutes is up.
Are we back on great? Um, so the overhead fire sprinkler plan, um, all new single-family residential construction is required to be sprinkled now. Uh, we have a landscape plan and then the grading plan, which covers precise grading, erosion control, and any dry utility. So the cost there is just over $11,500. The permit fee actually pays for the inspection staff. Um, so when they're out there in field doing the actual inspection based on the approved set of plans. So you have the building inspection fee, public works inspection for anything that may have happened within the right of way in terms of public improvements that need to be inspected, landscaping, as well as the fire sprinkler inspection. And that cost is over $9,300. And then other plan reviews that are collected would be the new addressing of the unit, the fire flow report, and a traffic control plan, which is normally done, uh, with respect to construction and having a traffic control plan in place uh, when construction is going on and they may have to partially block off the street. And that's about $2,100. So overall, the total cost in this category is just over $23,000. So this here is the development impact fees that are also collected by the city. Not only do we collect our own fees, we also are responsible for applying, uh, fees that do not stay with the city of Corona, but these regional fees. Uh, most of you are familiar with those and I'll go over that with you. One thing that is not noted on this slide is that there's also a school fee that's paid directly to the Corona-Narco Unified School District for all new construction. And they collect that directly from the applicant. Our residential, uh, development impact fees will cover anything from infrastructure related to street and signals, uh, fire protection facilities, library facilities, um, and parkland and open space. The fees that we pass on to the county that are regional fees is that multi-species habitat conservation plan fee that you see there, as well as the Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee. So the city's, uh, total development impact fee cost is just over $19,000. And then the regional costs are about $14,000. In total, you're looking at over $33,500 just in the development impact fee category. And then there's these other service fees that are collected, uh, with new construction. So you have the water meter cost that has to pay into sewer capacity. You also have, uh, the construction water meter cost, as well as some other state fees that we have to collect. In addition there, you're gonna see those three categories, which are noted in red. Those are fees that we collect on deposit and all of those are refundable when the project is complete. So we do collect a water meter deposit. We do collect a grading security, which is a deposit. And we also collect an improvement security. And all of that is refunded once the project has been completed. So the total cost of these fees prior to the refund is almost $5,500, but the total cost after refund is $23,500. So with all of those slides I just presented to you, I put it in this one table so you can see, um, the itemized account of where all of these fees are applied. So when you look at it in its totality, um, a single-family residential home is paying over $100,000 in permit fees, plan check fees, and all of the service-related fees. However, when you apply the refund, when those deposits are given back, you're looking somewhere in the realm of about $81,000. So what I've done for the council, this next slide is just gonna show you what would happen if you apply a reduction to the plan check and permit fees. There were three scenarios that were presented. There was a 30% reduction, a 40% reduction, and a 50% reduction. So the first column shows you if there's a 30% reduction applied to the plan check and permit fees. It would save an applicant about $6,900. Overall, with all the refunds in place, the total cost would be about $73,000. When you look at a 40% reduction, the total savings is about $9,200. Uh, with all refunds in place, the total amount would be just over $70,000, almost $71,000. And then when you apply a 50% reduction, it's a savings of $11,500. And the total refund, the total amount after refund is about $68,500. Just some pros and cons, uh, for you to consider. The pro, of course, is always an incentive to get, uh, someone to build a single-family home on an infill lot that's really compatible with Corona's historic past. And that can be done because the specific plan already has those guidelines in place. And it would also maintain the historic character of the neighborhood within Grand Boulevard. And again, the con is really, you know, the loss of revenue that we normally collect for our, uh, services, um, when we do permit reviews. The time would be subsidized by the general public using general fund monies. And again, this, uh, discounted rate would only be applicable to homes within the boundary that I've shown you and it would not be applicable to anyone else. So really the options for the council to look at today is to either direct staff to prepare a resolution, uh, for consideration and adopt maybe a 30% reduction in the single-family plan check and permit inspection fees. Uh, option number two would be really the same as option number one, but you would apply a 40% reduction. And option three would also be the same as option one, but you would apply a 50% reduction. And then option four would be to maintain the status quo. So with that, I will turn it back over to the council or staff me if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. This was my item. I, I really kinda bore this out of, um, seeing what is happening in Sacramento. Uh, there's a push to allow all kinds of craziness and we were lucky enough to, to get Senator Roth's ear pretty early in the process the last time when SB 9 came up, the first time we were able to exclude the historic areas. However, I think this is gonna continue to be a push, especially in an area that's, um, you know, um, within a mile of a transit, potentially being a transit corridor on Sixth Street. So what I'd like to, it's to me, is trying to find a way where we can encourage, um, we do have a housing shortage, encourage single-family homes that look historic in the historic district. Finding a way to do that, um, uh, and, and whether it's, uh, discounting, you know, I think my original, um, request talked about, you know, fees in general. So I, I was kinda focusing on two, two fees. I don't wanna discount things that we have to pay out. There's, I know there's a lot of, when we, uh, farm folks, farm stuff out to consultants that we're having to pay for that. I don't wanna discount any of those fees. I think that's important. However, I, I kinda looked at a, a couple of these fees as being ones that were done as an average. I asked, uh, staff a couple of questions. One, on the grading plan fees, those are the average number of hours for plan check. And the majority, if not, in fact, all of our, um, vacant lots in the downtown area are flat. They don't need a lot of grading. Um, there's really just, uh, you know, your regular grading to make the lot even flatter or even, you know, to, to get it ready to build on. Um, and, uh, and all the other fees are covered under, in my opinion, covered under public works fees and other things that were gonna be how water, water and things move in and out. So those are all covered in kinda plan check. In, uh, other fees like, uh, especially the, the parkland and open space fee, um, those are really high and I get why they're really high because they were set to build parks. Um, we're not gonna be building additional parks and that money is satisfied only for new parks, new parkland, and for new, um, um, pieces of parks. So we have an area that, that is, is built out. Um, we're not gonna be buying any more parks in the downtown. Um, I'd like to find a way to, to discount that to get people, to get these houses more affordable. Um, you know, I first looked at this and said, before you tune over one, one shovel of dirt, you have to come up with $111,000 or $80,000 that you, you know, have to account for to, to just, just to start, you know, to build a home. Um, so I, I have an issue, you know, with, with those two things. And then lastly, the, the water meter fee, I get it. I asked staff for a breakdown of what the $16,000 was. The jumper fee was $431, the deposit was 30 bucks. The actual meter itself was a little over 400. But then the water supply fee was $15,000, which is based on a 600 gallons per day. Is that right? So I, I wanted to get a little bit more about how that works. Is it, you know, or, or what that's for? I get, I mean, I understand what it's for, but I wanted to hear just a little more detail on it. So if I could get kinda those, um, questions answered. A, you know, the parkland fees, whether or not those are specifically put in specific buckets and what buckets those are in. And then that, that specific, the $15,000 for the water supply fee. And then grading fees, of course. So I'll let you guys pick on who wants to go first.
Tag, I'm it. Thank you. So, uh, great question. So the $15,072 for that part of the $16,000 is really basically buying into the existing system. So one of the things that water systems and wastewater systems have to do to be prepared for is we have to be way ahead of when the development actually occurs. When a development comes in, we already have to have the majority of the storage tanks, the reservoirs, and those types of things. Or the developer is, is, you know, doing their fair share for that part of the development. But in any case, uh, all of that provides reliability and redundancy to the overall water system. So as someone is coming in, they're having to buy into the existing system. That's all of the booster stations, the treatment plants, the water lines that are in the street, the storage tanks that are providing for fire protection. It's buying into that existing system and that's what that $15,000 is covering. It's the buying into the treatment plant. So for example, we just built the new ion exchange treatment plant. And when you look at the, uh, million gallons that goes through that and the 20-plus million dollars that it took to put in the, the source water and the pipelines and all of that, you're looking at just in that one little particular project, you're looking at about a $7 per gallon cost. Now, when you look at that throughout the entire system and you have water storage and blending cells and treatment plants and we provide that throughout the entire system, we have to capture that cost because we've already put that money out years ago. And so that's what that dollar is, is buying into the existing system so that we can recover that. And then we just reapply that through, or pay back a loan or whatever is necessary with that $15,000.
Okay. So that, that $15,000 is, is to pay back what's already been paid into the system? Because we're talking about single-family. And I get that a lot of our, a lot of these fees were, were generated or were thought up based on large developments. But I'm just trying to figure out what the impact to the system would be for, I don't know, what do we have, uh, empty lots in downtown? You know, maybe 50 or 60, I didn't count. I guess I should've done that, but, um, yeah, okay. Just a thought. All right, thank you. Who's next?
Next is me.
Thank you.
So for the Parks and Open Space, the money that's being collected there, it does get put into a separate bucket. So not only is it being collected to pay for acquisition and improvements for new space, but it also is being helped to pay down, uh, a prior debt. In the eighties, there was a park bond that was sold. It improved about 100 acres of parkland within the community. Um, there was, um, 100 acres that were purchased and, and improvements were made to park, um, acreage. And the, um-
Wasn't that a loan to ourselves?
Correct. Right. But, um, the Parks and Open Space Fund is, is helping to pay down the debt because the, um, shoot, the Quimby fees were supposed to pay for that and, uh, did not fully pay for that debt. So the general fund had to subsidize that debt. And so now the Parks and Open Space is helping to, to pay down that debt that was owed. So that's some of what some of that Parks and Open Space money is being used for at this time.
Yeah, I know that one of the things we talked about, I think our first, first few meetings was talking about, you know, maybe not charging our own debt to ourselves. We're, we're having to deal with this later on. But okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that.
And then on the grading plan check fee, and it does include, you know, also the dry utility cost and erosion control. Um, the way the system is set up for plan review, it is tiered. So we did this based on less than one acre. So we can look at anything from a 7,200 square foot lot to just under an acre. And then there is plan review fees for projects that are larger than that. But the 30%, 40%, and 50% reduction in these scenarios does take this cost into consideration. So they are part of the reduction.
Okay. Okay, great. Go ahead, Tom.
I wish everybody could sit through Joanne's presentation on this 'cause it's, well, for me, it's fascinating. And there's a lot that is complicated with building these days. I, I did have a question. Your first breakout slide where you give the plan check fees, and I just wanna pick your brain a little bit. There you go. For a 3,500 square house, square foot house, it's really 5,257 in plan check fees?
Yeah, so we also have a tiered system. The way it works is that there's building square footages identified in our table. And then there is a flat square footage and then every time you add on to it. So it kinda grows based on the size of the house. And what really changes the cost is that PME. So we did four bathrooms, cause bathrooms are very popular. So you're looking at your plumbing fixtures, your, your mechanical and your electrical. So that's a holistic amount, yes, in terms of what the plan review fee is. And then we then turn around and we'll charge the permit fee, which then covers the inspection cost. So when you look at those two lateral rows together, that would be the total cost that we would collect.
So you guys outsourced to like Bureau of Veritas and Physicus and probably three others, right? What do they charge for the, for just the plan check?
Yeah. So we, the way it's written in our contract, they get a percentage. So they actually get 55% of the cost and we keep the 45% because there is staff outside of building that also touches that plan review. You have a planner that looks at it. You have someone in utilities. So it covers that overhead. You have the time that the permit texts need to process and intake the plans. So it's a percentage ratio. It's a 55-45 split.
And when I, I'm just gonna pick on Physicus, cause I know him. The, uh, if it goes to a first review and second review and third review, I don't think you guys charge for the third review. I don't think you guys charge for the third review, right?
That is correct. So we actually, because our guarantee is to get them out of third plan check, so we do not charge beyond up one, two, and three. And then if there's something that's still going on, we bring them in for a meeting. But after that, it's an hourly rate because you're trying to address those small remaining facets. And we also don't use Scott Physikas anymore. We have a whole new group of consultants onboard.
Okay, so I'm going to pick on Physikas since you're not using them. But if it goes to a fourth plan check round, right? Then don't the plan checkers get more money?
We have it broken down by hourly rate. So if they then get charged the hourly rate for those pending comments.
And do you feel like, because I, do you feel like they abuse the system? Like they intentionally try to get to the fourth round and fifth round and sixth round?
No. Staff doesn't want to keep the work either. It's usually if there's something complicated or unique, or we're just not getting the information that's necessary. So at that time, staff intervenes with the consultant, and we try to sit down with them to say, this is exactly what we're looking for to get them completed. So we do not want to prolong it. It doesn't benefit anybody doing that. But at the same time, we need their licensed designer to provide us with that information since they are the ones that are preparing the plans.
Okay. And then I don't think anybody's going to build a 3,500 square foot in the circle. So it'd probably be about 2,000 square foot. So even these numbers would start to diminish, right? All right. And I really liked that they're building to historical standards. So the city can enforce that, right?
Yeah, that's one thing about that specific plan when it was designed in 98. It was, we look at building form. I think the latest one we did was on Grand and next to Circle City. It was supposed to be a craftsman model. The garage was placed on the other side of the street. So that's exactly what we're trying to do, is implement the same characteristic that is already within the circle, and making sure the form is also compatible too.
So what happened at Palm and, Palm and Grand?
I wasn't going to bring it up.
Is that the Steco it?
Yeah, that ain't historic.
Yeah, no, that's a, I'll talk to you later.
Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for being well-prepared. I think everybody knows that Joanne presents better than anyone. And I'm for option three, the 50%.
Okay.
Do I get to ask questions now?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I was wondering, just a couple of questions. Are these fees the same for developers that are creating like multi-unit neighborhoods? Do they pay the exact same rate, or do they get a discount because they're building more than one home?
No, so we also, so we do have a fee schedule for that. What they do is that they pay for the initial models. So it's like looking at new construction, and then they have like five models that they're out there doing production on. Then they actually get charged a different fee for repeat. It's what we call a repeat, because we don't need to keep rechecking the same plan four, plan two, plan one. So we do the main check just like this. We're going to do it five times over. And then we're just going to charge them a repeat fee every time they come in with their phases and pull a permit for each phase. So they actually keep paying a little bit as each phase goes on.
So they do pay the same fees. They just get a little bit of an economies of scale because they have multiple units.
On the repeat.
On the repeat.
But they do pay the same base fee, absolutely.
I think what she's asking is multifamily, not, not...
No, I was asking for multi, like developers that build more than one house.
Oh, got it, okay, sorry.
So thank you. And, but I was going to ask a question about multi-homes. If a unit came in, like a duplex or a triplex, would they have to meet the same historic standards in the downtown?
Yes.
And then, do we have any idea how much of a demand this would, we have to build homes in the downtown?
I do not. I do not know what that, that demand is.
But do we know if Mayor's assessment of like 50 to 60 empty lots is accurate?
It could be. I mean, we, I can actually have IT run a count and see if they could pick up what vacant lots are left in the circle to kind of give us an overhead of what may be remaining.
I'm just thinking about, you know, when these decisions come before us, I try to parse out the actual impact. Like, I understand why it is that the mayor wants to do this. But I'm trying to find out what the impact will be to the city and who benefits and who gets hurt. And so thinking about, you know, who has, building a house in and of itself is expensive. So is, will this break help, you know, a multimillion-dollar company come in and build a house? Or will it help a Corona resident build a house? If it's helping a multimillion, billion-dollar company, whatever, right? A developer that just has enough money to do this kind of work, then that's less compelling to me because we're taking money out of a general fund. And that's general fund dollars that we use, you know, for our parks, for our public service, for all that stuff. So while I understand the intention is to build single-family homes, I don't see the narrative here where subsidizing this will help a Corona resident more than keeping those dollars in the general fund will help our Corona residents. So, so that's where I'm struggling here. Like, I understand the intent. I really do. I, we feel differently about housing.
I like it when you struggle.
We feel differently. We feel differently about, about housing. We are seeing here that if a multi-unit, multi-housing unit does get built, they do have to meet the historic standards. So I am not in favor of actually providing a discount and removing those funds out of the general fund.
Mayor, can I, can I answer Jackie real quick? So a lot of times with, it's never a homeowner that builds the home, or it's very rarely a homeowner that builds a home. But it's a developer, right? So the big developers that are building Arentine and the multi-billion-dollar dudes, they could care less about this. But there are smaller developers out there that are looking to make the most profit for their money, just like anybody else would. Right now, we have a fire in a downtown home, and a bulldozer comes in, demolishes it, and then that lot sits empty because there's no incentive to build. The developers, the smaller developers are saying, hey, it's too complicated downtown in the historic section. I don't want to go there. I want to go somewhere where I can be more lucrative. So we have fires, and then the city puts a red tag on it, and the bulldozer shows up, and then the lot sits empty for 10 years. And you would know from Bell, right? That empty lot, those empty lots. So these reductions in fees, they're not really inspiring the homeowners. They're not really inspiring the big developers. They're inspiring the right developers to say, hey, I can get a break, and now it's worth my time to go build in the circle.
Right. And so that is not a compelling enough argument for me to give a break to a developer and take that money out of the general fund. Because the general fund is where we pay for things like parks, like services, like our public service and our, our public safety. So, you know, it has to, I think about the public and where the community is better served. Is the community better served by having that lot built with a single-family home? Or is the community better served by having those dollars go to the parks or a service?
I think that's one of my, the reason for this is not necessarily we have one or the other. My point is, I want to incentivize this so we can, we can get ahead of the curve a little bit. Because what I, what I think would harm the community, and, you know, Tom lives in the, in the historic district. If, you know, and if you drive down, you know, on 10th Street or 9th Street, and you look at some of the abominations that were built in the 60s that look horrible, and they have not aged well, and they're, they look, they don't look like they belong, that harms the community, that harms the historic. I'm sorry, and no offense to Ms. Collado, there's no such thing as a, an historic multifamily. There just isn't. I mean, unless we're talking about building something like that's, that's in downtown LA that we don't have. So I don't, I don't, so I, to me, that's the decision. Is it, do we want to leave it up to the state to, to find ways for them to put up things that we don't want? Or do we, or do we take the offensive and try and incentivize the things that we do want? And, and, and yes, having money come from the, having some money, we're not talking about, you know, thousands of units. We're talking about some money that would come from the general fund to incentivize the things that makes this community great. That when you drive down, when you drive down Victoria and you look at those craftsmen, that they're gorgeous. And they're not all from the same timeframe. They have a feel about them. But when you see the houses at the corner of, you know, Victoria and, and I want to say 8th Street, no, 7th Street, there's one that's there that doesn't clearly not belong. And, and it looks terrible, and it, that takes away from us.
So as someone who was literally raised on 10th and grew up in that neighborhood, I did not care what the building looked like. I cared that I could go to my library after school, and that my library had long hours, and that I could access, you know, a computer there that I didn't have at home. I cared about my park, which is where I went on the weekends, and with my friends. I cared about the things that our general fund pays for. And so, please. And so, you're, it's, the way the building looks is less important to me than what we provide to our community. And, you know, I feel differently than you do about single-family homes. Having friends and family who live in multi-unit, growing up with people who lived on 8th Street in those multi-unit homes that you probably feel are abominations. It's about affordability. I mean, there was numerous families who use it and live there, and to them, it's beautiful. And so I understand truly your desire to preserve, you know, history and preserve the historic buildings in our core, and I'm for that. But I am not okay with subsidizing and taking money out of our general fund in order to assist a developer to do that. And seeing that we have already ways to force development to look historic in the area, then to me, that's covered.
Well, I think you have to respect Jackie's points. It's just that, it's that simple. So, and they're valid. Everything that we're talking about is subjective, right? So I feel one way about one thing, and it's okay to feel that someone feels something different.
Thank you.
So I don't want to tear any of that down. I, but I do want to see our circle inside be developed and lots not sit empty. And I do think that this reduction in fees will help do that. And the people living in the, in the multi-units, they're great people too. And they can enjoy the new houses going up. I think we've beat the horse to death.
I think so too.
Okay. So I'm in favor of option three as well. So I guess we'll, Mr. Ellis?
Based on the direction we've received from you, we'll prepare with moving this forward, and it'll come back to a council meeting, and then you'll get a chance to argue about it again, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, and, Councilor Cis, I want to thank you for sharing your, we, we often disagree, and, and, and that's okay. And it's good that we both got to, it is. And it's one of the things that I love about you and I love about our relationship, that we can disagree and, and still care about each other and the community.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. No, he doesn't. That's what he said. All right. This is true and proven. Okay, next up, our communication plan update.
Mayor, speak. I do have a speaker card for the side of...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have a speaker card. I apologize.
Yes, I do.
I skipped right by that.
Here we go. You got the Joe button on. So I don't think anybody really can say with a straight face that $5,000 or $10,000 is going to make a break a difference whether somebody was going to build one of these houses or not. I mean, I don't see, I mean, I think, what's this? The, the fees are ominous for everybody all over the city. And, you know, maybe there's a way to look at all of them all over the place. But I just don't understand how, you know, cutting this, you know, cutting it this much in the grand scheme of things is going to make a difference. I'm pretty much still aghast that it's $100,000 with the fees upfront, or $80,000. It seems like the bigger problem is streamlining the process, and maybe we have more standardized plans that take less plan check. You know, you want to build a house, blah, blah, blah. It's like a block wall. You don't have to go through plan check if you use a standardized plan. Maybe there's some other ways that we can incentivize home building, you know, in the city. But I just don't see where this does it. I don't, I don't get how $5,000 is going to make or break a half-million-dollar house or $400,000 house. I mean, it's admirable, but I just don't see it. I just don't see how it's going to, going to get there, you know? And so, I mean, you know, maybe there's other ways that it seems like we could attack this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So next up, our communications plan update. Sean Hall, our chief communications officer, and Cindy Solis, our public information officer, will provide a report.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Sean Hall, chief communication officer. I'm with Cindy Solis, our public information officer. And we will present our communications plan update. So thank you for taking the time. And what we're going to talk about today is what we've done. Oh, yeah, you got that, thank you. And really what that's going to be is going over fiscal year '22 and where we're at with our digital engagement roadmap, and really just going over the numbers and reporting back on KPIs, our performance indicators. And then we'll talk about where we are now in our communications plan, and really where we're headed, and what the vision is, and where we're going to be at maybe a year from now. And we just asked that city council receive an update on the progress with the communications plan and provide staff with any desired feedback. All right, let's get it. So we have a highlight video that's going to showcase a lot of the work that we did over fiscal year '22. But I also just want to take a second to thank the council, city leadership, and also all the other departments. This really is a team effort, so we're going to be reporting on a lot of numbers. And that's not just communications. It is fire department, police department, community services, economic development. All of them have social channels. So, and they all have PIOs that are doing great work and putting out great content. And so this really is numbers for the whole city, and it is a team effort. So thank you for your support. And you'll get to see a little recap of what we did in fiscal year '22.
Certainly a sizzle reel.
Huh?
Certainly a sizzle reel.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little highlight. So again, just thank you to everyone who helped create all that content. And just really proud of the team, and, yeah, just thank you for all the support. So what we've done. So reporting back in our digital engagement roadmap. So last May, we presented on our digital engagement roadmap. And really within that, we go to the next slide. We defined four major objectives. And within those, we had actionable items to make sure that these got done. But those four objectives were to reimagine Corona's brand, increase our digital subscribers and engagements, create a target audience distribution playbook, and make our live broadcasts amazing. And a lot of these are ongoing, but we also have made tremendous progress in all of them. So, next slide is me. And to objective one, reimagine Corona's brand. I'll hand it over to Cindy.
Reimagining Corona's brand. So as you know, the city's strategic plan completely outlined a brand refresh as an action item for the city of Corona. A brand is more than a logo. So it's, it's our story, it's our heart, and really, it's what makes Corona unique. So in order for us to know that, we really had to go out there and ask our residents, what do you think makes Corona unique? And hear their, their distinct perspectives. So we launched our rebranding efforts this summer, and we have been able to hear from over 2,000 residents on what they think makes Corona unique, special, and a great place to live, work, and invest. So we're really excited to report back that the research phase of the branding project is now complete. I won't go into detail about what we heard from our community. I won't go into detail about what we heard from our community because tonight you will also hear from our consultant, but I also want to say our partners, Pesteia, who are here in the room with us. So, you'll hear a comprehensive report on that. So, with that, what will come next? We're, after the research phase is complete, they will then begin working on the brand strategy and development. And of course, what we're most excited for, our visual identity. So, our next actionable item here is completely overhauling our website. The timing of this could not be more perfect because our website redesign can't really fully happen until our rebrand is complete. So, what have we done in the meantime? Well, we've run heat mapping to see where our residents are clicking most on our website. We've drafted a scope of work to go out to RFP. And then we're also looking at evaluating our current pages to see when we transition to a new system, what can be improved, what can be carried over, and of course, where are their opportunities? Also, in the meantime, we're using new platforms for campaign landing pages with a clean user interface. So, this allows us to really convert and deliver on those call to actions. Some of those examples, for example, will be our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, our State of the City, and even our homeless strategic plan.
Excellent.
So, our next actionable item here is launching strategic brand campaigns. So, over fiscal year 2022, we built out eight campaigns, launched six of them, and four of them have now been completed. So, that's about a campaign every two months. It's a lot of work and it's so fun to just tell Corona's story. So, here you'll see kind of a recap of what we completed in progress and even in the queue, such as our Love Work Corona Initiative. But in the next slides, we're really going to dive into some of the numbers behind some of these campaigns. Okay, so, to kick it off, let's go over Hispanic Heritage Month. These numbers specifically report back on last Hispanic Heritage Month, so not the one that just happened. Before I dive into the numbers, I also want to just do a quick recap about what we mean when we refer to impressions, video views, and engagements. So, impressions are any time somebody sees our content on their social media platform, shown here by a little I. Video views are self-explanatory. For engagements, so this is any time anyone explicitly took action on a social media post, whether they liked it, commented, or just shared it to a friend. So, for our Hispanic Heritage Month campaign, we got over 4,400 engagements across our social media platforms. The next campaign that we launched, actually last November, in partnership with our economic development team, was a downtown revitalization plan. So, in partnership with their team, we launched a very comprehensive, robust community engagement plan. And thanks to the strategy behind this, we were able to hear from over 2,400 residents. I mean, that's amazing. That's 2,400 unique perspectives on what they saw was important for our downtown. This really led the strategy behind our plan and, as you know, was recently adopted. Our next campaign was our Black History Month this year in February. So, for this one, I really want to highlight that we received over 30,000 video views. That is amazing. But even more important here on the left-hand side, and I want to call it out, this post on Instagram alone received 20,000 views. So, that's two-thirds of our total video views. And what I really want to just emphasize is that we were able to partner with Commissioner Veretti, who I personally see as a brand influencer, right? Community champion, a leader that everybody recognizes and trusts. So, there's definitely, we, as we continue with our community engagement efforts, we're really wanting to leverage that, right? And using their platforms to allow us to amplify our reach. And then our next campaign was, of course, our 2022 State of the City. I'm a little biased, but I think every year, our State of the City just gets better and better. And I don't mean just like the projects that we're highlighting, but being able to educate our residents on what our city does because really our whole city does a lot. So, here, we, 168,000 views across social media. I mean, that's about what, one per resident, maybe around there. So, as you know, we did host the premiere at our Historic Civic Center, but beyond that, we created an actual campaign landing page for the State of the City. And then we broke it down and took it a level further to break it down into the topics that really residents cared about. For example, economic prosperity or a sense of place, right? So, allowing us to, or doing that allowed us to really have residents learn about the things that they cared about.
Cool. And so, I'll talk about objective number two, which two is increase subscribers and engagements. And so, the first thing, really the big picture thing that we're trying to do is to create digital engagement journeys. And what that is, that's kind of a practice that's in the private sector, is to create marketing funnels or journeys. And this is how you be strategic, how you can be strategic with digital engagement, to kind of bring along people who aren't normally engaged by campaigns that span across all channels, engage people slowly, get them more involved, involve, involve, until they actually become like community champions. And so, how we're going to do that is through implementing through Salesforce Marketing Cloud. It's a software that's really going to help us be strategic in launching these campaigns and tracking everything. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And that's going to be ready to go in quarter four fiscal year 23. And so, we're really excited about what that's going to give us the capability to really reach each resident on what's important to them and really reach that silent majority. The second thing we really wanted to do to increase subscribers and engagements was to go live more and post more reels and shorts, and we did that. And it worked really well. We got a lot of engagement on our live videos that we did at all their different events. And so, and those are just really fun videos. And then we posted a lot more reels and you see that we got 800,000 video views on our reels. And that's significant because that's 40% of our total video views came from reels in fiscal year 22. But the thing about reels is they're kind of unique. If you don't know what a reel is or a short, it's kind of, or like on TikTok, it's a 15 to 90-second video that's vertical. And it's, the way it's displayed is that you watch video after video after video and it's highly engaging. So, it's great for brand awareness and education, but it's not great when we're trying to convert on a call to action, like getting a survey intake, having people sign up for an event. So, we got to use it strategically for education and brand awareness, but not so much when we're trying to get intake surveys or get people to sign up or take a call to action. And then, we want to be more strategic with just putting out more video content because really, we do hear a lot about the video content because when you watch a video, it's the most immersive form of content, but it also takes the most time. So, we got to be strategic with how we use it. And so, we're really working on doing more series. You see series like Good News, Ask an Arborist, doing our Corona Beautiful Cleanup Highlights, as also just producing campaign videos and series around our master plans and around our cultural campaigns like Hispanic Heritage Month and Black History Month. And you can see for our State of the City too, the quality of our videos are really, really working well. And we won a Hermes Creative Award for our State of the City, which is great. And we got high-level engagement because we broke it down, right, into different categories so it's easier to digest. And the Hermes Award is an international competition recognizing the best in marketing, communications, and creative services across all sectors, not just government. So, that really speaks to the quality of the stuff we're putting out. So, yeah, good job, team. Thank you. And then again, just to review one of those series that we went, oh, thank you, that we just went over, Good News. I just wanted to highlight how this series is really, really working well to bring the positive energy online. You know, it's kind of fun, it's a little tongue-in-cheek a bit, but it's really about promoting the good things that the community is doing. So, we're really trying to work on building that sense of place through community, not just giving information, but again, building sense of place through tone and being strategic with what we're putting out. So, continuing, other things we're doing to increase subscribers and engagement, again, is to clean up our email list and niche down. That's like, kind of similar to building a target audience distribution playbook, which we'll talk about later. But it's, we're working again that in Salesforce. So, that's our big picture thing, is how do we segment our audiences, tag people so that we can look up people? Hey, we want everyone that's interested in trails and that wants text and we can send it specifically to them so that we can just cater to our residents and not spam them so that they stay engaged. And then boost posts. So, boosting posts, if you don't know boosting a post, it's basically a paid social post. And they're very efficient financially as opposed to just advertising. Now, they're limited into that platform, right? So, you're only going to reach the audience that's on that platform. So, you still run around at ads that are wider reach. But we played more with boosting posts in fiscal year 22 and we've stepped that up in this year. But we spent just about two, over $2,000 to boost and we got 37,000 engagements. So, that's six cents cost per engagement, which is really good. If you look at the industry standard for advertising as a whole, it's 26 cents. So, that's just really how we're trying to work to be efficient with ad spend and tax dollars, you know? And we get the best bang for our buck. So, all this work is really showing, we're trending, our numbers are trending up with everything we're doing. And I think if you look at fiscal year 21 versus quarter four versus fiscal year 22 quarter four, because really we started to get going the end of fiscal year 22. And you could see we're up 130,000 engagements. That's a lot, like so versus quarter versus the last quarter. So, you're really showing the amount of content we're putting out, the quality, and that people are really engaging with it. They're not just viewing it, they're taking action, they're commenting, they're sharing and liking. So, and then some more numbers, 26 million impressions in fiscal year 22? Pretty good. And again, that's how many eyes saw our content. 1.5 million engagements, so that's how many people actually took action on a post. So, that's, those are actually really important. And then 1.8 million video views. So, video views have a lot of value again because it's the most immersive form of media. And after you watch a video, you're going to remember more than seeing just an individual post. And we got 1.8 million video views in fiscal year 22. Again, and this is across all our social channels, so this isn't just our team. Every single department's been putting stuff out and really, we're trying to step up our video content and it's showing. So, we got 700,000 more video views in fiscal year 22 versus fiscal year 21. So, we just got about a little over 1 million and now we're at 1.8. So, yeah, we were seeing the impact of that. And this all, all this work and all these views and engagements equaled out to gaining 14,000 new social followers across all our platforms again. And that is a 7.9% increase in our total audience growth, which is above industry standard. So, normally you want to hit 5% year over year and we're at 7.9%. So, that's awesome. And again, and this is doing it in the government sector because that 5% is in the pop, it's across all, which I think it is more of a challenging, challenge to get attention on social media when you're in government, when you're competing with pop culture and people's friends. And so, then objective three, I will hand that over to Cindy.
Yeah, so our objective three was to make our live broadcast amazing. So, over fiscal year 2022, we've worked to improve the stability and ownership of our broadcasts. So, in this last year, we hired a full-time broadcast specialist to really create continuity in our broadcast workflows, to implement new software, but also to install new wireless audio systems. Our city council allocated $100,000 in ARPA funds for the complete overhaul of our broadcasts. And so, where we're at with that process right now is we've gone out to RFP for the design and we're finalizing all our procurement process to hopefully start that design process shortly. So, we're really excited to get that process going. Next up is improving the broadcast quality and lighting. We recalibrated each camera's exposure and we've also installed soft lighting. We think our council deserves soft and beautiful skin tones. And just to illustrate that, we have a before and after here.
Like gray.
We think our council deserves to be in the best light possible, pun intended.
Oh.
Just downcast.
I look gray in that picture. Yeah, thank you.
I love a smile.
Relatively speaking.
Yeah. So, on this next slide too, we also have an example of what most cities broadcasts look like, not naming any names, in our city on the right-hand side. So, we're continuing work on that and we're just excited to make improvements. Okay, so, objective four was.
No, thank you.
Okay, so, objective four was to create a target audience playbook. So, our first action item here was to identify significant audience groups. So, what do we mean by that? Sean kind of alluded to this already, but basically what we're doing is we have all these different lists of customers. For example, we have our utilities customers, we have our recreation participants, we have so many other different lists, and we're bringing them all together and then tagging them or segmenting them by their interests. So, for example, if you're a parent and you want to sign up your kids for a recreation activity, we want to tell you about the new programs, about the upcoming class registration. If you're a resident in a low-income area, we want to tell you about community assistance program, whether you need help with your mortgage or your rent. We really want to reach our residents on the topics that they care about and that matter to them. So, our next action item here is to identify community leaders. We currently have a community leader list, what I call community champions, and it's built of about 500 leaders in the community, all, from all walks of life, whether it's civic, nonprofit, faith, sports organizations. And really, over the last fiscal year, we launched two campaigns and one video featuring social micro-influencers. So, real quick, just some examples, we had our Black History Month with Commissioner Veretti, as I mentioned before, Hispanic Heritage Month with Lucy Silva. And even our Good News, I believe the latest episode had a little soundbite from 49ers linebacker Sagon Alubi. Apologize if I mispronounced that. And then most recently and not shown here on this slide, we partnered with our economic development team to do a highlight for Manufacturing Month with Celine. So, everybody recognizes the brand Celine and because it's very well-known, we were able to reach, sorry, not reach, we had a total of over 50,000 video views as of the last time I checked. So, that has possibly grown up. But really, just by partnering with community leaders and champions that our residents already trust, we're tapping into an audience that may not have already been following us. So, we're pretty stoked about that and we'll continue to work with partnering with more community leaders. Next action item here is to rethink traditional communications. So, we continue to operate with traditional mailers, flyers, such as, for example, we have our Corona Connection, we have other traditional flyers that go out to promote our community, even posters for our summer concert series. But we're working to really bridge the gap between digital and physical communications. For example, our community services team has QR codes for our surveys for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And beyond that, what we mean by rethinking traditional communications is using programs, for example, our Citizens Academy, our Student Discovery Day, even our Mayor's Youth Council, that really helps us build more meaningful relationship with these and really creating community champions, advocates, that will be educated on what happens in the city, all the work that goes behind the scenes. And then, when they're out in the community, just hanging out with their friends or their family, chances are if something comes up about the city, they're going to tell them what they learned. So, I think it's a really valuable tool that we're using and big shout out to Justin Tucker for leading the Citizens Academy and of course, our other programs.
So, that was all, so that was all of the objectives for our digital engagement roadmap. So, we're really excited about what we did in fiscal year 22, but we just want to keep progressing. And so, where we are right now, we kind of say we're building the plane while we're flying. And so, we're iterating and coming two years ago, again, the communications team internally was Cindy. And so, they became a priority to really be more proactive in how we communicate and how we listen. And we really wanted to take approach that was catered, that was customized. So, we didn't want to just kind of like do what every other city did. And we want to really look, okay, what are we trying to do? What's the best way to move forward? And then, look at the different ways we can implement. And we're really excited of where we're landing and where we're going. Again, we alluded to it with Salesforce and doing a CRM and making sure all of our communications are integrated. But where we're at before was just kind of doing everything and it was all disjointed. So, we had a lot of different methods of communication, but everything was kind of all over the place. We worked to kind of define them. And again, this is across the city, this is a team effort from every single department. And you can look at like, all the different ways we listen. So, we have all these different ways we can hear from the community, everything from just traditional phone calls that come in to sentiment monitoring on social media and campaigns and survey intakes, see, click, fix. And then we have outbound, you know? And a lot of times, it may just, communications with the, just determine, we just want to speak out, but we want to listen first and then we want to communicate. And there's our traditional ways, but we're really trying to move past that and be more efficient through new media. And you can see all the lists of the ways that we can, but all of it was kind of disjointed. And so, now, what we're trying to do again is integrate the way we're talking so that it all goes into one place, we can use the data to be efficient and to only put out content and messaging to people that is valuable to them, you know? Not spam everyone, not just do mass email lists, not just spray everything on social media, but again, be more strategic, run ads and be target people correctly. And, and that's where we're headed, is really, it's called one-to-one, omni-channel engagement is kind of the technical term in the marketing. And so what that means is one-to-one, so that when a customer gets something from you in the private sector, it feels like it's catered, like you're speaking to me personally. You know, the tone of it, the content is relevant. It's the way the software works, it has the person's name, you know, it feels like they're being talked to or that the content again is just relevant to them. And it's across all the different channels. So every channel that person is on, we're able to reach them there. So sometimes maybe it could be someone likes text for certain alerts, but they also wanted email updates on our newsletter, you know, so we can have that all housed and everything that we do speaks, communicates to each other. And again, what this allowed us to, to really engage people is to really speak to them on a one-to-one basis. And it's to build relationships with our community. We must be open and honest, listen carefully and engage each resident on the things that matter most to them. So keep nailing that home. We want it one-to-one and we want to send out messages, messaging that is catered to each person. And we do that again through a CRM. And again, this is with IT, big shout out to IT. On the backend, they're doing a lot of work to implement our CRM. And a CRM is a customer relations management software. And it's really where we can house all this data and so that we're being efficient with our communications efforts. But that's also can work beyond and improve services as well. But then we're also beyond our CRM, we're going to be using Salesforce Marketing Cloud. So again, be efficient and, and just target people with only the things that are important to them. And we have a little video that's going to kind of explain that better at a high level. So you can kind of really see what omni-channel, one-to-one omni-channel marketing can do.
This is your average resident. You know, the silent majority. We don't hear from them much because they're busy, jobs, kids, hobbies, homework and side hustles. They definitely don't have time to come to city council. So it's hard to get their input on big decisions, like the types of stores they want to see in our downtown, or ideas on how to improve our trails system. And you know what? That's a shame because they have some really good ideas and they're actually really into hiking and they don't even know we're building a trails master plan. So this, this is a problem. But this, this is where one-to-one omni-channel engagement comes in. Let's just call it democracy on demand, trademark pending. This is where your average too busy to care about municipal government resident is no longer too busy to care. Because now we're engaging them on the things that matter most to them. And we'll do it on the platforms they are already on by integrating outreach tools like Salesforce Marketing Cloud with listening tools like Qualtrics surveys and overlaying GIS data that ties back to our dynamic CRM. We can run targeted customer journeys that get our silent majority talking, or at least get them to fill out a quick survey. So no more getting lost in the noise, average resident. Your opinion matters and we're coming to get it.
Want to give a big shout out to Josh, a small air digital journalist who animated that dance scene at the end, the whole video, but the dance scene is.
I was gonna say, it looks like Josh. Josh is dancing.
That, that's supposed to be me, that's what I would like to look like if I could have hair, you know.
Wouldn't we all?
Yeah, but so really that's kind of a high level overview of really kind of how we can reach people that maybe wouldn't have the time to come to city council, wouldn't really give their input, but we can be strategic with how we use technology and media and we can get their input and they can have a piece and democracy, democracy on demand. So.
Love it.
So yeah, so this is our big focus is to reach our silent majority and you see how we can go do that. But we also want to not forget about our engaged minority, right? So to reach our silent majority while better serving our engaged minority. And so that's things like Citizens Academy. We're working at more long-form content, like podcasts, things that'll be more educational and going more in-depth, trying to give people more opportunities to get more involved if they want to, you know, the people that are really engaged. But also if you just want to go about your life and give input on the things that are important, we can reach the silent majority as well and give them opportunity to give input. And we're excited about that. So this implementation of really when we'll be able to do that, we're hoping we'll be able to run these campaigns and these journeys in April 2023. And you can kind of see the steps we have there. But again, it's a lot of work on the backend of like integrating all these, the data. It takes a lot of work. And so again, big shout out to IT for all the help that they're doing with that. And so in summary, I'll hand it over to Cindy.
Thanks. Yeah, so in summary, we just wanted to kind of recap some of what we talked about tonight, this evening. Our first objective here was to imagine, reimagine Corona's brand. So as we mentioned, our research phase is now complete. We're so excited for you to hear our research presentation with our team, our partners, Pesteia. And really they're going to just highlight what we heard from our community and what makes Corona unique. So our second objective here was increasing our digital subscribers. So as Sean mentioned, our audience grew by 7.9% over the last fiscal year. That's pretty impressive when the industry standard is 5% and we're a little slightly over that. I, I think we're doing pretty good and there's a lot more work ahead. So we want to continue to increase the quantity and the quality to not only increase our engagement and views, but really to continue to build relationships with our community, educating them, building transparency and ultimately trust, right? Our third objective here was creating a target audience playbook. So as Sean mentioned, Salesforce implementation is happening now. We cannot be more excited to just get that ball rolling and that will really enable us to implement one-to-one omni-channel engagement. And lastly, of course, was make our broadcast amazing. So we've improved it tremendously, a shout out to our broadcast team. Everyone has just really pitched in and helped with that effort, but we're not done yet. So we're going to go out to redesign and they're going to help us completely revamp the backend of our broadcast and that's going to help take us to the next level. So as, as you've seen, we've met, made significant improvements and significant work, but we're not done. We have so much more to go and we just honestly sincerely thank you for the opportunity to serve and tell Corona's story. We want to thank you for your support and your leadership. And with that, Sean and I are available for any questions.
Okay, Councilmember Richards.
I don't know if I have any questions, it was all really good. I am convinced that Wes watched the state of the city 150,000 times. If anyone's.
I believe it.
I can tell you how that number spiked.
Yeah, unique likes, there are unique views.
And I'm all for a city TikTok account. I've watched. I want Jacob on, I want to see a little Jacob Ellis TikTok and his dog Spot, you know, kind of a thing. And then, I guess I have to be serious for a second. I, I really liked the silent, the silent minority, majority and the engaged majority and that you're trying to reach both markets because there are a lot of people that are just busy in life and they know there's a city hall, but they probably don't even know where it is. So it's, it's good that the whole city can, that all the citizens can be involved or at least know what's going on in their city. And then just a friendly request for me is all of these videos that you guys are making are great. I just hope they don't come and go because these videos are going to be really cool to look at 10 years from now and 20 years from now. So if there's a way to store them to where they're publicly accessible, because it documents history, right? So whatever videos you guys made two years ago.
So actually our Corona Public Library Heritage Room pulls all of our, our videos and content, so it's all being pulled into our archive.
Are they doing right? Are they doing good?
Yeah, they're doing great.
Okay. Then I, then you got.
Sorry, just wanted to tie them in there.
You're, you're a community champion. So, and that's it for me.
Councilmember Casillas.
Yes, thank you. So, I mean, wow, it's just, wow, where we are now, where we were just a few years ago is, it's a huge, huge change. And your labor is noted and Sean, your leadership is so apparent. Like you have really, really like just taken us to the future. So thank you. You've built a really great team and, and it shows. So you've got a lot to be proud of. So I, you know, I, I, what I, I, so there's things I loved about this. The Good News Series, thank you for combating the cynicism that is out in the world, that we're at least helping to, you know, highlight the good stuff that's happening in our community because there's plenty of stuff that goes wrong that always catches the headlines. So I'm just really appreciative of our consistent Good News show, show that you guys put together and you guys are great on it, by the way. And I love the bloopers always at the end. The followers are fantastic, the strategy is fantastic, I mean, like the strategy is there, you're really thinking about it. What I love is that you think about it from a strategic way, but you're not losing the heart in the process. Like you are incorporating who we are, you're turning that around, you're allowing us to see the best of ourselves, which in turn will allow us to be the best of ourselves. So thank you for making that happen. I, I love surveys, I think they're great. I think it's a good thing to do. I, I think it's imperative though, that survey design is at the forefront because people do get exhausted by surveys. There is, you know, there's like a, there's a good number, there's, keep it under, you know, this amount, keep, be sure that the question, you know, isn't leading, that it allows for, you know, proper and honest responses. So survey design is just really, really critical, but please keep those surveys coming. The, the awards that you guys got, okay, again, back, back to just like loving on the work you guys are doing. But ultimately, what I think is interesting is that, you know, communications can be a thing that we just do passively. Like it can be a thing like a lot of cities and organizations and even businesses kind of just like check the box and get through it. But, but the work you're doing is not just highlighting what we are accomplishing as a city, but again, it's like aspirational in, in its, at its core, right? It's like trying to lift us up and show us, you know, what our community is made of. And, and that is just so priceless. Like you're, you're helping us grow our pride in our community. And I'm, I, I can't emphasize enough how much that is important in the work we do. It's the soft stuff that helps, you know, build our community and bring us together. And I just wanted to make one more comment about that video where you were talking about, you know, the resident that hikes and isn't providing, you know, doesn't, I want to applaud you for the understanding that citizen engagement is not rooted in apathy. It's rooted in the fact that life is complicated and it's hard and it's busy. And being involved in your city, there is a lot of privilege in having the opportunity to do so. And there are a lot of people who want to do more. And so it, it, it bothers me tremendously when people say, well, if you wanted something to change, like get involved, get involved, like, bro, there's people out there working two jobs, trying to raise a family, trying to get by, right? So like when, right? How, how? So thank you for, for really presenting our residents in, in the most accurate light, which is everyone's just trying to get by. And we want to catch them when we can catch them. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to heap on some, some praise too. Just so pleased with the direction and I, I want to completely second Councilmember Casillas's praise of not just, you know, the, the two of you, but your whole team. It's just so good and it's so great to see what we're doing. In fact, you know, I, I got more aware of what you're doing by seeing the things that you've done. And I go out and I purposely search for these things in other cities to see what they're doing and it's, it's like, it's night and day. And I see other communities and other things that they, you know, I was talking to a colleague on the SCAG board and, and we were talking about connecting with, with our residents. And she was bragging up, you know, what this, what they do and how they did it. And, and I looked and I was like, oh my God, this is so bad compared to what we've done. It's so cool. And it's, and I, I, you know, Jackie hit it right on the head. It's that, that, you know, communicating with that person that doesn't have time to be engaged. I mean, I was one of them. I, I grew up here, I care about this place. I, you know, I, I moved here when I was 12, but I had four kids, still do, but I had four kids. I mean, sometimes I wish there was a few less, but depending on the day. But, but now they're all old and no fun anymore and they got grandkids that don't live here. But I was working two jobs when they were little. I, you know, I was coaching sports and, and I, I, you know, I can tell you the amount of times I came to the city hall was not, we could probably count on one hand at that time. And, but I'll remember, you know, it's funny, I, and I forgot the way you said it, Jackie, but it's, it's, it's that, that humble brag, you know? And I remember hearing and, you know, kind of grasping onto something as a former mayor back 20 years ago that talked about, you know, the city always being in the black and, and having this, you know, strategic plan about, you know, finances and stuff. And I repeated that, like anytime anybody wanted to talk about Corona, I was just like, bam, bam, I wouldn't repeat those things. And be able to provide those things to people to repeat is really cool. I had a meeting this afternoon, a lunch meeting with a 32-year resident of the city Corona, came from, you know, not from this country. He owned several businesses here in town and, and outside of town. And he just could not stop talking about how much he loves Corona and how much he, you know, loves this piece and that piece. And it's one of the reasons he came here. He bought the dairy on, on Main Street because he loved it and, and he thought it was just really cool. And he put money in the city and he's, you know, we were meeting with our economic development folks for him to, to invest a whole bunch more money in the city. And the more, you know, and he referenced Good News and he referenced some of the things that you guys have done. And it's cool to see that connection and the more that those connections that you make. And it's not just about the views and I, and I get it because it's a data point, right? But it's those connections that mean more than that, that allows people to grasp onto something and hold on to it. And that's why I, I love the Good News section. I think the Good News stuff is really cool. I like how you cut it up so people can kind of like, okay, watch this and get excited about it. Then, and they, I've had people repeat things to me, oh yeah, I saw it, you know, do you know Josh? And I go, yeah, I know Josh. So I, I told you, Josh and, and, and you guys are going to have to start signing autographs and just saying Cindy, you guys are going to be ready. But it's such a great thing and, and I'm, I'm so impressed by it. The, the CRM data, I, I was skeptical at first about how that was going to be, how that, how we were going to use that and not just for surveys. And I, and I get it, you know, you keep asking people, you know, questions. Some people are weirdos like Jackie and I that like surveys and answering questions. But, you know, seeing how those connection points are, I'm really interested to see how that's going to progress this time. But I love the data, I, I'm a data junkie. And I, I, it allowed, but that, that piece allows us to tell our story. And that's really that, you know, frankly, I think Sean, the first time we met, you know, that was what, you know, we talked about was telling our story and how we tell our story. Because we do do really great things here. We do fantastic things. And I told Mr., Mr. Ellison, our, even our former city manager about how we do great things, but no one knows about it. And, and we're able to do those, you know, get those things out in the public. So again, thank you so much for this and I, I really appreciate it. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards in the public?
Mayor, yes, we do.
Great.
Welcome. It was more abrupt. Usually things kind of wind down and then somebody would have, would have headed up. Probably won't be surprised that I have maybe possibly a different perspective on this, but it seems like, well, one, I, I think the first time I saw Sean up here doing this, it's really apparent that he does actually get this. I think I said that as a time that so much of this was just you're counting clicks and going, well, we made this many posts and it's all about the tally. He actually gets kind of how people engage with social media and, you know, that it's messy and it's all over the place. He does generally get it and talking to him for any, any random 30 seconds, you know, you, you see when somebody's in the right job. I'll just leave it there. You see when somebody's in the right job, when you talk to them and, and they're on it, you know, it's like Kim with the numbers, you know? You see that Kim is doing the right job when, when you talk to her for a few minutes. And so you're doing the right job, both, both of you are in the right positions, I could say. But I think so much of this is about one-way communications. It's about you guys getting across your perspective about how you think things are going. And then I see, I think sometimes a little, I'm trying not to be cynical, but sometimes you guys go after surveys when you need a survey to tell a story or you need surveys to get in action. You already sort of know what you want to do and you want to back it up. Or you clickbait everybody with restaurants. What restaurants do you want? Well, the other 364 days of the year, well, we don't have any control over restaurants. And it seems a little cynical sometimes. But when people need, they need something in this building, they could pick up the phone and despite all the wonderful people here, I probably, you know. I probably, you know, as far as random citizens, nobody gets the people in this building probably more than you guys or me. I spend a lot of time here. I love the people in this building. But the process and the access and getting things done for people is impenetrable. You know, it's, it's, it's difficult for people to access the people and the services or get their question answered. And they're not about setting about a broad social media search to try to find how to take care of their tree. When, when I hear things are on Ask an Arborist, I'm like, "What's that?" Because I tried to find it, you know? And, and I want to know about deep watering my tree and I can't find that. And I shouldn't have to go ask Moses personally about it. So, it's, it's, even for me, it's impenetrable sometimes. So, you know, and, and as far as whether everybody's busy, yeah, a lot of people are busy, but not everybody's busy. There's a reason why this room is fairly empty. And, and I think sometimes the people in this room think it's because everybody's doing such a great job. You might not be surprised that. I don't think that that's necessarily why the room is empty. And it's not because everybody's broke or disadvantaged. It's because it's not worth people's time sometimes to get involved because they don't understand it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our last item is our branding research findings. Sean Hall, Chief Communications Officer, will present the item. Come on down.
Just pull up the presentation.
You guys were being all real cool and being in the back of the room. This is true.
First, I'll just introduce the topic and I'm gonna just hand it right over as we pull up the presentation. But again, Sean Hall, Chief Communications Officer. And really, I just want to present Pestia, our agency that is helping guide our rebrand and really partnering with us. And again, this is gonna be a recap of our community engagement process, really our first phase of our branding process. And right, and so, in our strategic plan, we identified that we wanted to do a rebrand and really to help define our sense of place, define who we are, so we could really rally around the character of who Corona is. And we, right, we started in July? Summer? And yeah, just completed our community engagement phase. And so, Pestia is here to report those findings. And so, I'll hand it over to them. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I totally forgot. We actually have a video that's gonna highlight the recap of all the different community engagement we did. So, we kind of tried to do a bunch of different ways so we could reach people in different places. And you see a little highlight right here of our community engagement that we did, all in-person. And we also had digital, but this is a recap of our in-person engagement.
We've been listening. That's all we've been doing for the last few weeks, just absorbing and listening. You tell us who you are, right? And that's the whole point of even today.
Well, I love this. Make it a little bit more community-oriented.
Circle city.
Circle city.
Corona is a nice city to live in, family.
Just tell them.
Family.
Yeah.
I would say friendly.
Everybody's friendly. That's very welcoming.
Yeah, I would say family-oriented, I guess.
I don't know.
Peaceful.
Well, there is some areas that you could improve. Good restaurants could be great.
Traffic sucks.
So, we want to make sure we acknowledge our history, but we also want to plan ahead to make sure that the brand carries on for decades to come.
A successful brand accurately represents your community. That's why this rebrand initiative is so important.
We embrace the historical representation.
Once upon a time, I heard it was a lemon capital in the world.
But I'm wondering if that's clinging too much to the past.
Oh, I feel like being in all cities is like very precious, like it's very important to keep.
We have a lot of churches. And churches build community.
Development, community, and diversity.
And parks bring children and children are family.
The old theater, "Don't tear it down," was the comment.
I feel the logo is too busy.
I mean, I see the connection with the crown.
It could be done a matter of.
Maybe a, a little race car.
We want you to come up with a campaign. Very simply, it's kind of one image and one slogan together that you feel represents the future of Corona.
Corona was Corona for a lot of years for, you know, basically from its founding up until late 80s, early 90s.
So, I think that, that the whole point of this rebranding is that we need to also look at that, what are we missing?
I feel like that's what's missing in Corona, to bring it back to where it is. We're not just an off-ramp on the freeway.
Which other cities do you visit outside of Corona and why?
I love driving downtown Riverside where you can see the arts and culture. You can see murals, themes that we shouldn't be afraid to capitalize on what we do have, but also meld in some innovation and not be afraid of innovation and change because now, more than ever, it's necessary.
We just always known Corona as home.
Glad to see a lot of familiar faces. We know each and one of you also engaged in our one-on-one. So, it was so great to have one-on-one conversations with you. And again, just to be welcomed back again to share the stories that really the community gave to us throughout this process. So, you know, we started this journey really asking, what does the future hold for the city of Corona's brand? And we were so honored to collaborate, really with the city at large, not just the communication team, to collaborate with residents, with business owners, to really dive in and understand the stories of those who call Corona home. And our goal today is not merely to present numbers and data, but to really illustrate how people currently experience your city and to illuminate the next path forward. Today's insights also bring momentum to your strategic plan and it's not meant to replace it. So, if you can imagine the strategic plan as your skyline trail, this report is a bridge along that path that's gonna help us keep moving forward. And this presentation today too, it's not exhaustive, but it's the key high-level findings. So, for you historical society buffs in the room, which we know there are many, we will make sure you will have an in-depth report. Also today, you will not be seeing any artwork or creative messaging at this time, but sure know it's coming and we're really excited to dive in, as I know everyone is. So, with that, let's begin. So, how do you go about capturing the spirit of a city? And so, well, as you saw in that video, we went straight to the source. We immersed ourselves in your wonderful community. We talked with real residents and families, met with business owners, faith leaders, educators, coaches, and so much more. And what we discovered was overwhelming. A deep, deep desire to participate and help the city's rebrand initiative. Over 2,200 people showed up to tell their side of Corona across 12 different research environments, even with the traffic that we heard a lot about. And this was significant because it gives us a sense that the quality of the data we're, you're going to see today really has some legs. We also collaborated with your residents to host a number of different research environments. So, you'll see here on the screen, we held community meetings, focus groups, farmer's market. We learned about yacht rock at your summer concert. Never heard of that word before. We also did a digital survey, ran city staff workshops, and had a series of extensive interviews with over 50 people. And so, right now, here are just the top themes we heard across all those meaningful conversations that are gonna be a guiding pulse for the future brand. And then we're gonna dive deeper into those insights. So, the first key theme is Corona is diverse. Corona is diverse and in that diversity, all perspectives need to be considered. Corona is a city that's about family and that care extends to all who call Corona home. We also heard that the rebrand should focus on creating a unified identity and vision. It was less preferred that the rebrand helped increase the scale and population of Corona. Corona also had mixed opinions on what came first, the lemon or the orange, but overwhelmingly resonated with the crown symbol in the logo. And finally, residents widely shared pride in supporting local entrepreneurs who they really feel embody the spirit of the city and can continue to be ambassadors in carrying that spirit of the city forward. So, diving deeper, we're going to give insight behind these key themes and your community's reaction. And importantly, what we care about is what does this mean for the future brand? We'll take a look at where we've been, what the community said about where they feel we are today, and also where residents hope we're going to be headed. And on the following slides, you'll see some callouts of key themes from those different questions as well as some direct quotes that we're gonna be reading. So, starting with where we've been, your community shared a rich history of first starts in Corona. For a lot of participants, that history was a lot longer. We were very surprised to hear that nearly 80% of participants said they have lived in Corona for more than 10 years, with 58% having lived in Corona for more than 20 years. Again, this gave us such confidence that the stories and the feedback we were going to hear was really weighted. These weren't just people who just walked off the highway entrance, if you will. These are people who've really lived and experienced the city.
And this, this is the 2,200 respondents or just in-person?
Yes. This specifically is, yes, that's a good call-out. This specifically is from the survey. So, this is not cumulative of also the feedback in the qualitative, the one-on-one conversations. When we also asked people why they moved to Corona, we were surprised to hear many didn't have a choice. They were born here, but happily so. And what's kept them here is actually the city's affordability, safety, and the perfect environment to raise a family. And even those who didn't grow up here were drawn to Corona for similar reasons. And we asked this another way in the survey. Again, this is the 2,000 responses from the survey. And we found that younger families were highly motivated to move to Corona because of its affordability. We love this quote from someone. "Yes, this is it." This being Corona. "I love where I live, love my neighbors, love the city, love everything except the traffic." We also had the honor of meeting with employees of the city, who themselves, also a majority residents, and we asked them how long they've worked here. Nearly 50% of participants in the survey have worked more than 10 years in the city, with over 25% working more than 20 years, which is an amazing, I mean, I don't know if you get a rocking chair at 20 years or beyond, but very amazing. Again, this, this also began to reinforce the fact that Corona to us feels sticky. And what we mean by sticky is that once people come here, they want to, they want to stick around.
I love that term. I am gonna use that from now on. Thank you for that.
You do. It's not trademarked like democracy.
Sticky.
Yes.
We're sticky. Perfect.
And this, and the same goes for our city employees. Once people work for the city of Corona, no surprise, they stick around. 67% of survey participants strongly agreed that they plan to work for the city long-term. And we thought this was so interesting. We also wanted to ask residents the same question. Do you agree with this? Do you plan on staying in Corona long-term? And as you can see, 50% strongly agree. 25%, somewhat agree. We'll couch that together as maybe 70% of really positive. So, all of this, from again with the where we've been section, really tells us that city of Corona has a unique community that is really well-established, deep, deep roots. But it's also invested in its future, which is those, those signals we're seeing of why people are sticking around. And so, these are all key ingredients, as Cindy was saying, for champions for your future brand.
Thank you, Caitlin. So, now we're gonna move on to look at where we are. And so, this was everybody's favorite question. If Corona were a celebrity, who would they be? And, you know, here's some of the responses that really stood out to us because they're really aligned with the brand. Timeless like Tom Hanks, adaptable like J-Lo, stable like Denzel, and approachable like Rachel McAdams. And so, we're gonna see that coming through as we continue. So, we asked people to describe, you know, a typical member of, of the city. And obviously, that's kind of diverse, but the answers were, you know, people around, you know, the median age with, with a family that have moved to Corona to take advantage of the schools, you know, of the sports and everything that the city has to offer for, for their, for their family, affordability, safety, and everything that comes along with that. Then asked, you know, in the, you know, the group, in the focus groups and in the pop-ups, you know, we asked people to, to rank keywords for the city. And what was, you know, overwhelming as we see there, you know, the word family followed by the word friendly and then peaceful. These are words that came through over and over again and we're gonna see, you know, how that plays out in, in some of the other questions too. This, this real sense of, of a, of a family-focused city. This, this kind of blew us away, the answer to this question. So, this is, you know, out of the strategic plan and we, we asked people to rank, you know, what they think is most important from, from this list. And above, you know, downtown revitalization and community safety, people put, you know, homeless outreach right at the top. And that blew us away as a team. And I think that's, you know, a testament to the unique heart of the city. Then, asking questions, you know, here, what does Corona do better than other cities? And how can we use that to, to strengthen and improve the city? You know, the, the responses to these questions, again, were very revealing of the heart, to the heart of the city. You know, this is, as we'll see on the next slide here, I think that Corona listens to its residents, our teachers, police officers, fire officers, et cetera. All live here and have a connection with the residents. It provides a small, a small home feel better than most cities. Helping each other doesn't really happen in other towns. Corona cares. When people care and show up, great things can happen. And the amazing thing about this, about this feedback, is that it wasn't just coming from residents. This is coming from people that, you know, visit the city or work in the city and were just describing this experience of being in Corona as completely unique. And so, it's not necessarily a biased perspective of people that just live in the city. And here, asking people, what does Corona do well? And here's another, you know, quote that stood out to us. Again, people come out of the woodwork to help and support each other. And, you know, this, the people's, you know, the feedback is that community comes around you and makes you feel at home, wants you to be successful. And, you know, we kind of feel that this is kind of Corona's magic dust. And maybe it's something that, you know, we can take for granted because we're so used to it being in the city. But from people's perspective, this is, this is actually unique. So, now, a look at where we're going. Obviously, the question about the brand was, was a very key topic of discussion. And, you know, people felt strongly on different aspects of the brand, as you can see some of the quotes there, that, as you can see, we like the crown because it's important. Keep the crown, lose the orange. We will lose it if you take the crown. And so, you know, there was a lot of different perspectives around the orange and what came first, the lemon or the orange. But, you know, everybody agreed that the crown was, was, was key and was crucial. And, and however the, the kind of logo system is gonna look or shift or whatever going forward, we, you know, the data coming back strongly suggests that the crown certainly needs to be a very, very key part of it. This slide here from the data, from the surveys, this reiterates that, you know, what do you think of Corona's current brand? And as you can see there, you know, it's kind of in the middle, neither like it nor dislike it. There's kind of this, you know, it's diverse in terms of people's perspective. And some people don't really know how to feel about the brand. Then, you know, a lot of conversation around history or the history of Corona and the importance of history came out of this particular question. Because as we talked about the logo, we then talked about the elements that are in the logo and, you know, why, you know, how important those are. And, you know, we can see that we have this crown that represents us, and then I like the orange. I think there's a lot of representation in the logo from our rich history. And then, you know, it's interesting that so much of the current logo tells you what the city was, but the city has a kind of, has kind of grown beyond that. So definitely, it was a lot of feedback about the importance of history, right? And so that is, needs to be a crucial part of the brand going forward. But there was also, you know, feedback that, from some people, that maybe didn't feel so connected to the history and were more concerned about where Corona is going, right? And so looking at this, this is another quote. "I think there's a way to meld the tradition and heritage and history with a new school feel that is charming." And so, you know, looking at the data and the feedback, we really feel that, yeah, history is key, but also there needs to be this element of where we're going that is key to the future brand. Then some of these questions are really very revealing and I think very key. What did you say your first impression is for people arriving in Corona? And, you know, a lot of people said, it depends on where you enter the city, right? And so, you know, people said, if you enter from the downtown area, for example, you have one perspective. If you come in from another area, like, you know, South Corona, you're going to have a different kind of perspective of the city. And so from that perspective, we feel there's currently a lack of cohesion around the brand. And so, you know, we want people to have the same positive experience, unified positive experience of Corona, no matter where they enter the city from. And so if you see here, you know, the first impression of someone arriving in Corona for the first time is positive. You can see that people somewhat agree. And the reason for that is now having the focus group conversations, et cetera, is we understand that, you know, people didn't, you know, it is positive, but it's also dependent on where you enter the city from. Then, what are your thoughts on Corona being a tight-knit community? And, you know, this was also very, very revealing. You know, as you can see there, the quote, "in pockets." If you're in Green River area, it's tight there. If you're in South Corona or if you're Eagle Glen, I think it's tight in those pockets, right? And then the other quote, "My neighborhood has 15 houses on the cul-de-sac. We all know each other. We're all connected by text message. We have block parties. Everybody's kids play on the street." And so there's this real sense that there is a very tight-knit community in Corona, but it happens in pockets, right? And it's not necessarily this completely unified sense within the city. And we can see here, again, the answer to this question in the survey, people, again, they say they somewhat agree. And again, that is because there is a sense of unity. But, you know, it's happening within pockets. And so, you know, going forward and creating the strategy and every other element of this brand, we really believe we want to create a brand that helps to unify and, you know, bring all those pockets together within the city. Let me ask this question. What other cities do you regularly visit? And here's a list of them, you know, and there were more, but these are the ones that kind of stood out. And, you know, a lot of people go to these other cities, you know, for the experience. You know, they're going there to shop, you know, the vibe of the downtown area. And so that need is being met for people in towns that are relatively close. They don't need to drive too far. And obviously, the families can enjoy that together. Although I wouldn't necessarily say that it's, those cities are aimed at family experiences. That never came up or didn't come up often. It was rarely about a kind of experience and the vibe, and not necessarily aimed specifically at families. And so now I'm going to hand over to Yuna, who is going to talk about what the findings mean for the brand visuals.
Hello. Okay, so here, what you're about to see is possible brand elements for the visual side that we'll be exploring. And these are all coming from the history of Corona, the research, strategy work that Tyrone just went over. So we all know that the history is very, very important when it comes to creating brand identity for a city. And of course, Corona is no different. We want to reflect and honor the rich history that we have. But first, let's take a look at some examples and break down two very, very important visual elements that are going to be very important when it comes to branding. One is the logo on the left side. It's about being really simple. It's about vision forward. It needs to be very symbolic. It needs to have personality. On the other side, we have the city seal. The city seal has to have more history elements. It needs to feel more official. It needs to show the heritage, and it needs to feel more authentic. So what kind of things can we leverage from Corona's rich history and make them be part of new system? We want to start with the circle. The circle has been always a part of City of Corona. It's a historic shape, whether you look at it from the urban planning of the city, the citrus, the crown, now adding to the family aspects to it. It kind of comes around and starts to make sense to be part of the brand visual elements. It's a strong symbol of the past, present, and the future of City of Corona. We also heard a lot of people really, really loved the concept around the crown visual. So we think that it's really appropriate to explore as we move forward with the branding work that we'll be working on. Tieface is also a great way to bring heritage into brand identity system. We will be looking at posters, old signages that have been used in the history and see how we can update or even use it as it is for the classic moments like the seal, where we want to have the history and the heritage. Also, color is really important element, visual element. How can colors be inspired by history? Frankly, it could be the citrus, it could be old poster signages. Again, like, we'll be pulling these from the history of Corona to get more inspired. So ultimately, this part of the presentation is really ensuring that we will be playing with the historical elements into brand identity system. And we can't wait to share our progress in this work next time we meet. So I will hand it back over to Tyrone.
Great, thank you, Yuna. So now a look at our recommended positioning for Corona. So we believe that Corona is about family. Now, that might sound simple and mundane, but the reality is that families have recently been neglected in the branding of modern cities. And here's a couple of quotes to illustrate that. "Much of the media attention on cities has been focused on young, professional, or older retiring Americans. But families with children have been largely overlooked in our current urban renaissance. Children are often under-prioritized or even disregarded in urban planning and design." Family also has different meanings for different places and people. But what does it mean specifically for Corona? Like a family, Corona has experienced many life stages. You could say it's part of our legacy. A journey that started with the innovative building of our circle and lemon industry and continues with our bright new future ahead. Whatever stage of life we're in, we cherish our past to plan our future. Corona is a place where families and businesses thrive. It's an environment that has always cultivated excellence. From our lemon industry to our racetrack, it's why we brought our families here in the first place. So our kids can be cultivated and nurtured in the legacy of excellence for generations to come. Corona is a community that supports one another. From our local departments that serve with pride and humility to our residents that support others through acts of kindness. Even if you aren't from here, we'll give of our time and provide you with any resources we can to make sure you're successful. In Corona, we will go the extra mile to support the city we love. In Corona, family means honor. The crown in our logo is more than just a picture. It's a symbol for how we live our lives. We're proud of where we live, and it's our privilege to take care of what's around us, from our trails, to our mountains, to the people we encounter. No matter who you are or where you're from, we'll honor you as if you're part of our family. In Corona, family is home. Once you're here long enough to experience the warmth of the community, you don't want to leave. It's the place where you are known and where you're missed if you're not around. Home is where you can be yourself, relax, and dream. Obviously, the circle is such a key part of the city. When we think of Corona, we think of the circle. As we look at the themes we just talked about, we start to see that it represents more than just the downtown area. All of these themes need to work together to create this unique and differentiated experience of what makes Corona a family. When you look at it differently, you see these are literally the points of a crown. Thank you. That's the end of the presentation. This is just looking at our next steps. As you can see there, we're currently in the research and community engagement phase. We are going to move on to do brand strategy and messaging strategy after this, and then brand and visual identity, and then on to the brand rollout at the beginning of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, yeah, I got a little back in my head here. Mr. Richens, would you like to go first?
Well, I make comments, and then you guys always make better comments.
We did this on purpose. It was on the plan. We met in secret to talk about how we were going to do this.
That's what I was thinking. You guys aced it. It's pretty clear. I don't even know why you're here practicing before the meeting. But you guys aced it. I didn't know who Rachel McAdams was. I still don't know who Rachel McAdams is.
They're watching movies.
Sorry. Yes.
I'm glad we have pixie dust. Thought that was cool. And if somewhere in the future, if you could work into your reports, the phrase "Crown Town"? I've always heard "Crown Town". Going back to Crown Town, leaving Crown Town. So.
I like that.
It's, I think I learned it from the high school students. But it's a great report. I'm excited. I'm not going to just talk forever. I need to move on. But I'm really excited with where you guys are at. You aced this section, and I really look forward to the next section.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Great presentation, but even better listening skills. You guys did a really good job of listening to people, of listening to us, share what we think about ourselves. You asked really good questions, and you all took really good notes, obviously. And you're helping us translate to ourselves what it is that we're saying. And that's a difficult task because there, and I remember when we did our 101, there's like, there's the little questions, but then there's the ones that are deeper. And you would laugh at the question about, you know, what celebrity, you know, best represents us. But you think, really, what we're asking is like, how do we personify ourselves? You know, how do we see ourselves? And then by asking a celebrity, we're hoping ideally that we're finding some common ground in where we're, you know, what we see. So there's a couple of things that stood out to me, but they shouldn't have because it all feels very obvious. But the ranking of homelessness, right? Which, and you all noted that, is providing services. That stood out to me. And what it says is that not only are we on the right track to address that issue, but in fact, we should feel even more emboldened to keep going because it's on everybody's minds. I was a little taken aback by, and it was early on in the presentation, by this comment that, you know, we're not interested in the population growing in the City of Corona. And that just makes me bristle a little bit because it feels very much like, this is awesome, like, stay away, right? And that's not very family-oriented, right? The NIMBY is completely opposite to, hey, this is our home and we want to share it. So that kind of stuck out. The other thing that really stuck out to me was, clearly, we are proud of who we are, but we're slightly embarrassed of what our house looks like, right? It's like being proud of your family, but you don't want your friends to come over to your house. And that's kind of sad. Like, that's kind of sad, right? Like, I haven't picked up my room, and so don't come over. Like, we can play outside, though, right? So that makes me a little sad. And what that means, what I internalize there as a council member, as leader in this community is, man, we've got work to do, right? To make ourselves feel like our house is okay to invite some guests over. So that stood out to me. What's interesting is that you all are keeping us really on the edge about these, you know, our visual identity. And boy, everyone wants to go there, right? It's like, what about this? And we all feel very strongly. I do like where you're headed, which is, hey, there's the logo, and then there's the seal. So I see how you're trying to, you know, make us all feel okay. Please, everyone, which is impossible, but you're going to get most of us by having two things instead of just one. And then that last, I want to almost like verbatim ask for your script about what you were saying, where we are proud of where we live.
Sure.
And where you said, you know, it's home is where you're from, and it's where you're missed. I just, all of it was just so beautifully poetic, and it felt so much, I just, I felt it. So I really, really appreciate that. And I'm going to just re-watch and hear those words over. So what's interesting is that also with rebranding, it feels a little bit like intangible, right? It feels a little, like, branding, when I've heard and talked to residents about this endeavor, again, you know, it's easy to dismiss and say like, why? Why pay for this thing? Why do this action? But like, it's almost like therapy, right? Like, therapy is really useful because we need to do some inner work, right? We need to discuss and find out, you know, where our weaknesses are, how we feel about ourselves, why we feel that way about ourselves, and like, where, you know, how we can be better us. And so for all those doubters, you know, this exercise is a little bit of internal therapy. So thank you for guiding us through that exercise. Looking forward to what's next. Really excited and happy that we're sticky in the right way. Thank you.
Can I just speak to a couple of things you said there before we move on? So I think, just firstly, just on your first point, people saying that, you know, we don't want the city to grow. I wouldn't say that that was an overwhelming response from people, that, you know, they were very negative about that. But it was more that, there was more of an emphasis on growing what's already here and growing our community and coming closer together. So I wouldn't say there was a negative pushback on that specifically. So apologies if that's how the wording came across.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, but there was much, definitely more of an emphasis on what we have and strengthening that. And then secondly, yes, on the intangible, you're right. And right now, in this research phase, it still feels pretty ethereal up here. But now, when we start going into the strategy, that's when it's going to start to become more grounded. The strategy and the messaging, and it's going to feel more grounded. But this, the key part of this is that we're validating everything we do from this point, and that's what's key.
Appreciate it.
More therapy.
More therapy is good.
It's almost like you guys get paid to do this. I don't know. It's pretty awesome. I didn't have any real questions, other than I love the feeling of, you know, and I guess it sounds bad sometimes, but an echo, you know? That these are things that I hear from other people, these are things that I think, which tells me that, you know, as everyone said, you listened well and you guys are pushing this back. Now, the same way, an echo is an. Now, the same way, an echo isn't always exactly how you feel. And this is the thing I like about it. I like that it's, I don't want it to be exactly how I feel or what I've heard from one or two or 10 or 100 different people. I want that mix, but it still feels, it feels right. And and thank you for differentiating the two between logos and seals. That's a lot of questions that I've gotten. I would say of all, well, maybe not of all the things we've done, but but pretty far up there, this is one of the ones that frightened me the most, even though I, in fact, it was kind of my idea. I mean, I kind of pushed it to you two years ago when we were, we were at a conference and said, God, I'd really like to see this come together somehow and, and, but at the same time, truly frightened. But you have to get out of your comfort zone sometimes to do good things and I think that you guys have done it. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the depth that, and again, I agree with, I can't remember if you see us that last couple of minutes or something, I'm going to go back and listen to a few times and and I'd love to get the script for how you read it. So it was good. I'm seeing the shadows start, which is, which is a really good thing, I think, and I will from now on be using sticky. I always tell the, I think I even told you guys a story about an old, a person that said that.
Be sure to to include the context in that.
No, no, sticky. I just like Sam, I'm just going to walk around saying, hey, sticky, what's up? No, that's half the fun is saying it and then trying to excuse it. But the other part is that people come and they don't leave. And, you know, I guess that's a, that's a really awesome to see, you know, that you're folks, 2,000 people, that's fantastic, you know, great job. Yeah, I'm looking forward to the next, the next couple of steps. I think you explained it very well. I think the pieces that you you showed us are are a representative of where we're going, so we're excited to see it. Let's see, that's all I had. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, yes, we do. We have two speaker cards for this item.
Come on down. I think you, you have to say your name and then how long you're going to be living in the city.
Two weeks.
I'm just kidding.
How sticky are you?
I did, it's in my thing. Excuse my voice because I have allergies and it's going crazy. I have to say I was a slacker, so don't start my time yet. Okay, but I was a slacker, didn't read the thing. Fabulous, fabulous job. So I'll just go on with what I wrote before reading that. My name is Carrie Smith and I'm a 44-year-old resident, not 44-year-old, 44-year resident of our beautiful Corona. I attended local schools and have worked in Corona at my family's aerospace company for the last 28 years. My husband Jeremy and I raised our daughter Avery here. She attended local schools as well and is now an engineer. We have been active in our community through local nonprofits, service clubs in the city of Corona. We have watched our community grow, witnessed the good, the bad and the ugly that has come with that growth, but through it all, we love Corona. I was asked to participate in a rebranding panel a while back and while I don't fully understand the process of rebranding and thought the questions were a little strange at times, I am happy that Corona is going through the process. The last rebranding left us with some hideous metal sculptures on Main Street and not much else. I hope with this rebrand, we can express who we are in a branding campaign that highlights all the things that make Corona so amazing. I wanted to share what I love about Corona and how I see our community. We are a prideful, hardworking, family community. Our history is rich. We were once known as the lemon capital, ditch the orange. Citrus blossoms perfumed our air. We had a couple of car races around Grand that brought much attention to Corona at the time. We hold on to our history and we embrace the future. Skyline was once a favorite party place in my teens and now has matured into a trail system that brings visitors from all over. Our parks are filled with an array of activities and sports. We even have pickleball courts. We are welcoming and inclusive to all. We celebrate and highlight the different cultures in our community and strive to do more. We are a community of volunteers, nonprofits and service organizations eager to do our part for Corona. We take pride in Corona, AKA Crown Town. You can find the crown on our city logos, sorry, our city seal, locally made apparel, old lemon crates, marketing campaigns and even gracing the skin of many in this town, including me. I hope the crown will always be a part of Corona's brand. Corona is a manufacturing city. You may be surprised how many manufacturing Corona's companies are in Corona. Our family business has a manufactured part on 95% of all military and commercial aircraft. We are very proud to see our parts are made in Corona, California. We have a chance to have a real downtown, a thriving space that draws our community together and invites visitors to enjoy our Corona, something we have all been waiting for. So to wrap it up, I see now through this presentation, the workshops, community outreach surveys and panels have provided a great picture of Corona. They truly listened. I'm shocked I wasn't expecting that. Surveys usually aren't, you know, read very well, but they nailed it. I am so proud of what's going on in our town and so sad to be leaving it. And my last thing is that the panel, oh, Corona is full of people who live and work here and are great examples of humans. I hope the branding will be worthy of this fabulous place that will always be home in my heart.
Oh, thank you.
I know, I'm going to miss everything, but I truly love Corona and thank you.
Thank you.
And side note, I was with Joe Morgan in that panel and so that was a little chaotic.
Everybody's got to give a pen of flesh somewhere.
Indescribably bummed that Carrie's moving. Well, one of the key points that I picked up was apparently not everybody is moving away. It seemed like there's, you know, Carrie's moving, but it doesn't seem to be a mass exodus. I don't think the growth thing, just to follow up on what, it's not about not wanting to grow. In the past, it seems like it's been presented that growth was the goal and it's not, it shouldn't be the goal to grow. When we grow, it should make life better here and it hasn't always made life better here when we grow. I think most people are good with growing as long as it's, it brings good people, but it also brings a better life. When we have more amenities, when it grows and it's balanced growth, not just like, well, we got to have a lot of houses, otherwise we suck as a city. And that's kind of how I was pitched before. So I mean, it's over and over and over again, from Ms. Dais, from the previous group. I think you guys have a different view on it. So just know that this is how, we've all been told how it has to work. And so I appreciate that you have a different view of the whole thing. So, but I think that's where a lot of it came from. I love the place. I'm not going anywhere. You know, I love the entire city, every bit of it. I feel like I've lived my life in all the different areas of the city, you know, between paper routes and friends and family and growing up in this area and that area. We moved to here, we moved to there. You know, I mean, I'm not, you know, I think that was the, the theme of our focus group, which is how much everybody appreciated and appreciates the people here in the community here. I think it is unique, you know? So I think the problem has been that we haven't had, you know, like I said, I grew up making fun of Norco. I grew up right on the line, Parkridge, right on the line. We could walk across the street and we were in Norco. I grew up making fun of Norco and I'm a little, I've been a little jealous in the not-too-distant past, you know? They know who they want to be when they grow up. I've said, they want to be a cowboy when they grow up. They want to be Little Branson. I get it, but they all rally around that and they all know it. Everybody in the city shares that goal of where they want to go and we haven't had that here. And to that end, I think this is a useful exercise to do. I think that, that these folks did listen, they did get it. You could kind of tell just in the room today that they got it and they appreciate it. So, you know, if this helps us get a vision and helps us decide whether we want to be an astronaut or, you know, Bob the Builder or whatever we want to be, you know, we got to find our own identity that we want to be, you know, Elsinore's got theirs. We just haven't had a thing to point to around here. We go to Ontario, they've got, oh, we got Ontario Mills, we got the, we've got the center, you know, they have concerts, they've got downtown, they've got, they've got things. We haven't had the thing to point to, to go, come to Corona because Skyline's about it. And we've ignored that until recently. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's the last comment. So we are going to be in adjournment. Next meeting of the city council is the city council meeting on November 2nd. We'll see you all then. Thank you.